This time I'd like to call the meeting order. Would everyone please stand in the front? Pledge of the oath of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the scope of liberty and justice for all. Jim, would you call the roll, please?
I'll call Kristi. Jordan?
Here.
Oakbridge?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Thrash?
Here.
Vincentza?
Here.
All members are present.
None.
Oh, Butler.
Not here.
I'm aware of a lot of them. I was aware Kara's out of town this evening, so she was going to be missing this evening's meeting. Okay, everyone's present at this time. I'd like to ask the law director to step forward and Ms. Kristi Lipscomb, would you step forward also, please? At this time, we will hold the swearing hand of Kristi Lipscomb for the third ward council seat.
Okay, you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. I speak your name.
I, Kristi Lipscomb.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
That I will uphold the Charter.
That I will uphold the Charter.
And all the laws of the city of St. Clairsville, Ohio.
And all the laws of the city of St. Clairsville, Ohio.
And that I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially discharge.
And that I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially discharge.
The duties of the office of councilperson.
The duties of the office of councilperson.
For the city of St. Clairsville, Ohio.
For the city of St. Clairsville, Ohio.
During my continuance in said office.
During my continuance in said office.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Kristi.
Thank you, congratulations.
Welcome to the city council and you can take your hot seat. Okay, at this time, first item on the agenda will be the minutes. Has everyone received a copy of the minutes from the September 6th regular meeting? Does anyone have any questions about those minutes? Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to accept. And it's gonna be a second, Mr. Thrash. If they could vote, will vote.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Oakbridge?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Vincentza?
Yes.
All members are present.
Okay, the September 6th minutes have been approved. We'll now go to the 12th of September special meeting. Has everyone received their copy of those minutes? And does anyone have any question on those? Hearing that, we'll now take a motion for acceptance of this special meeting minutes.
Second. Jordan?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Oakbridge?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Vincentza?
Yes.
All members are present.
Okay, the September 12th minutes have been approved. Okay. Before we get into the regular agenda on the business, I was contacted by Mr. William Brooks and referenced a question or some information on South Park. We had a long discussion. He understands that any projects or suggestions or anything of that type has to go through the recreation board because they're the ones that control what actually happens down there and when. But he did have an invitation he wished to present, so I will just, Mr. Brooks, you have the floor.
Only thing I'm allowed to say, that I'm, we are having a ceremony on October 1st at 12 Moon at the South Park where we will be dedicating two benches and a chair to citizens and community members. John Mark Burckheimer, John A. Burckheimer are going to receive their names on one bench. Kevin Barr, city's first recreation director, he is going to have his name put on a chair. And Ann Williams and Bill Williams are going to be honored with their name on a bench. And we're gonna have refreshments and just, just a meet and greet, few speeches. We're gonna have refreshments for, for quite a few people. We're inviting council and we're inviting any citizen from St. Clairsville that wants to come down. Okay? Thank you.
Appreciate it.
October 1st at 8:00.
That's at South Park, of course. Okay, we'll move on now to the reports. The mayor's possibly gonna be here late. She had some important things to take care of. It's been gone all day, so hopefully she'll make it back prior to the end of the meeting. So at this time, we'll move on to service director, Jeremy Greenwood.
Thanks, Jim. Good evening, council. Legislation items before council tonight, we've got 22, 2022-37, the Clean Ohio Grant for the bike trail properties, and that's the second reading. The 2022-38, the urban canopy restoration, that's also a second reading. And then we have 2022-40, which is the ODOT municipal bridge inspection program. That is an emergency. We need that tonight. And then 2022-41, the amounts and rates for tax levies for the county auditor. That has an October 1st deadline, so we need that for tonight. Other items that are still out there, we still have issues with the refuge haulers and still have at least four groups wanting to work with us for the gas aggregation program. Meetings, there's been 11 meetings in the last couple of weeks. Completed projects, we completed smoke testing in Ward 3. We have the preliminary water distribution budget and working on that. The upcoming projects that we've got, we've still got the I-70 project. We're delayed until probably the end of October, just waiting on ODOT to get out of our way. Distribution system, we talked about that a little bit last time. We're still on schedule, hopefully to be out to bid first part of October. As I mentioned before, the lead times might actually hamper what we're doing. Smoke testing, hopefully gonna start Ward 4. We're gonna do it next week. It's gonna rain this week, so we can't do it. Still looking at paving on South Marietta, the last part of October. Needing to work on a casement pipe for the water distribution project to go before we do that paving. Still waiting on revised numbers from the asphalt company. Still working on the legislation for the purchase of the properties. Our water plant backup generator is in for repair work. It looks like we dodged a bullet. They might be able to fix it and be all right. We've got a valve replacement project for two broken valves on Plaza Drive that we're gonna be starting soon. Working with the county on the agreement for the water. They asked for another extension until mid-December, so we asked the EPA to February so that we don't have to keep going back to the EPA asking for stuff. Had somebody run into a fire hydrant today, so that'll need to be fixed. Still working on building projects and things going on. Still working on the administrative policies and procedures. Updating our standard details for streets and sidewalks and working on their inflow and infiltration control plans. And that's actually goes down into the department. We'll skip the electric for right now. Water and wastewater, we got an NOV, notice of violation on I&amp;I issues from them. They want us to submit our yearly expenditures and update the control plan, so we're gonna be working on that, trying to get that taken care of. Back to the electric department, same thing, pole replacements, service work, disconnects, street lights and doing some services. Water department, we've got the I-70 project, still trying to fix valves, curb boxes and hydrants whenever we can. We only have 16 breaks so far this year, which is pretty good. As I mentioned, the smoke testing in Ward 4. We're also gonna be getting new water nodes. That is what reports back on the meters, what the meter consumption is. So once we get those in, we'll need to set up appointments and be installing them in the buildings. Couple issues with some residential water meters and things, trying to get those fixed. Street department, same thing, patching potholes, mowing, street sweeping, working on catch basins and cleaning catch basins. Rec department, we are restaining the amphitheater this week. Was one of the projects we had budgeted. Also, the rec received a $1,000 grant to re-landscape the amphitheater area. And then what else you got going on, Eric? I lost my paper. Flag football started. There's 135 kids in the program. Volleyball program started tonight. There's 52 kids in that. It's the first year of the programming. Also wanted to note, everyone, there's a homecoming parade scheduled for the 28th and a bonfire, what was that, Wednesday of next week?
28.
28, too. There will be a craft and vendor show on Saturday, November 19th. There's things posted here and then always mess it up, so it's the meat and cheese class. There'll be another meat and cheese class, you can be craft and meat and cheese. Where are we, rec center? Please, I wanna congratulate the, for chief on obtaining that grant. That was a, there's a $5,200 wellness grant that he applied for and got. Good of the city. Only one out with a medical issue, no one with COVID. And that's really about everything.
Okay, thank you, Jeremy. Does anyone have any questions for the service director?
Does smoke testing in third ward, the numbers kind of?
I haven't gotten the numbers yet. We've been running around, especially with the fire hydrant today. We didn't, I didn't have a chance to get, the guys to get the counts.
Okay, so you'll just keep us posted on that as?
Yep, and I get those.
Similar to the other two.
Yep.
And then on the legislation, I don't know, I just wanted to ask a question or two now of Ms. Elizabeth.
This week, do we get the, is it something he can answer?
Yeah, I don't think so.
Okay.
Well, I just wonder what the first two, the 37, 38, right? Which given authorization to get grants, right? What's our match?
We haven't determined that yet because we were waiting to see what was gonna happen.
Okay, so this is just a second reading then?
Yep.
Because before we would approve it, we'd have a number yet?
Not necessarily, because the one, the one is gonna be based off of the negotiated prices with the owners, which we actually got the appraisers done, the appraisal's done. So now we have to go back and forth with the owners. And then the tree one is just gonna be whatever we have left over, just to be able to match it, because it's a one-for-one match. So the bikeway one is going to be whatever we can negotiate. There's not a set number yet.
Okay, so this is the second reading. We could have an amount, I mean, it just, it seems that we would wanna know how much that would be.
Yes, and if it's something that is outrageous, obviously I'll bring it back to council and go through it, but you know, we have what we anticipated being, going through.
Okay, so this is just the second reading tonight? And then the other ones, I just, it's kind of more of a formatting thing, why?
There, those are the formats that were distributed to us. The one is ODOT, that's their special formatting. That program is for bridge inspections. Since we are under 10,000 people, population, they'll do the inspection for free.
And that's 40?
That is 40, yes.
Okay. And general engineering?
That's the attachment for this, for the bridge engineering.
Okay, so this is ODOT's line here?
Yep.
And then is one with old English writing, it's just the?
That's the same format that the auditor gives us every year for that. So we take their form, fill in our numbers. Thank you.
Did you say we will know the cost? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't.
No, no, I'm good.
You said we, you will let us know what the cost is before we go forward with the?
Yes, for the properties, most definitely.
Yes, okay. And my next question is, is patching still being done?
Yes, when we have enough people. Lately, we've got one that resigned from the street department and one that's out sick on disability for a while.
Okay, and the restraint, restaining of the amphitheater, what's the cost?
Do you remember what that was?
Like $900, $200 was what it was.
Around $10,000?
Yeah, that's right.
And my last is not a question, actually, but on Young Lane, there's a fire hydrant that's covered by weeds. I don't, I don't know if you do that or not, Don.
We'll look at it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for the service director?
The gas aggregation, you say there's like four bus parties interested? Do we have any figures at all yet, or?
They won't, no one will give us figures until we sign.
Until he signs, okay.
So that's what we're basically, I'm working with Elizabeth to try and make a determination if it has to go back and have original legislation read again, or we can just pick one of the companies, or?
How would we go about like picking? What's?
That's, that's what we're trying to figure out. Because it's literally like, one company's telling us, well, you can just pick us because I used to work for that other company. And another company's going, no, you gotta do this and yeah. So it's a little bit of a dance, you know, just trying to make sure that we have it set up right.
Okay, any other questions for the service director?
I don't know, be the right time or place, but I'd like to add to it. On September 8th, I went down to the bike trail at the gazebo for the Belko Works dedication of the two Alberta spruce pine trees to pass board members, John Marshall and Kirk Porterfield. And just like to thank Belko Works for supporting our bike trail. Also, the 9/11 monument dedication at courthouse was, I'll just say excellent. Did a real good job on that and thank all those first responders for what they do. And also thank you to Eric, that last concert was nice. Very good job. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for the service director? Okay, we'll move on to the police chief, Chief Arbenz.
Good evening, council. As Jeremy said, we're pleased to announce that we were awarded the grant that I applied for through the Ohio First Responders Recruitment, Retention, and Resilience Program. Our award of $5,200 will cover the total cost for the next two years of the Cortico Wellness App. This app will give each officer and their family members anonymous access to 24/7 confidential support that's in hand and on demand through the most trusted wellness resources. This app provides help with everything from substance abuse, anger management, anxiety, PTSD, behavioral health tools, cognitive strength, burnout, chaplain support, COVID-19 resources, depression, critical incidents, family support, financial fitness, goal-setting, grief and loss, marriage support, nutrition, parenting, physical fitness, retirement planning, sleep and stress management, suicide prevention, and many more, with a library of self-assessment tools, resources, and direct lines to professionals in those fields. Taking care of our own is highly important, and too often the signs that others are struggling or need assistance are not shown. I hope that with this tool, that any member or their family who may need assistance will feel confident and confidentially reaching out to the help that we are now able to offer. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. Anybody have any questions or comments for the chief? Yeah, I'll make, I'll make one comment. I've had occasion to go past the school area quite a bit in the last few days since the speed indicator was put up before you get to the elementary on both sides. And I was there different times and once or twice even when school was letting out. And since that sign has been up, that electric sign, I've noticed there's a traffic going through that area, especially when school lets out at 2:00, 2:15, has significantly slowed down. So I don't know whether people think that you're gonna get a ticket from that, but at least it's making them conscious of what their speed is and they have, I've noticed, especially when there's not even a line of traffic, they're just more aware that they're in the school field. So that's a good place to put that, so good job. Okay, we'll move on to finance director, Ed Williams.
Good evening, everyone. Resolution 2022-41, it's the standard one that we do every year. It's required by the auditor. I did receive notice of that on September 15th. It has to be passed by October 1st. We don't have another meeting before then, so it needs to be passed as an emergency. That's all I have.
Any questions for the finance director?
This isn't any new funding, this is?
It's just the tax levy, rates and amounts.
Any other questions or comments?
Just, and one other question, you just sent it to us?
Last Thursday.
Just reusing it, maybe you have another question?
Oh, no, I apologize.
Oh, I thought maybe you wanted a?
I was about to intensify.
Okay, all right. I didn't want to catch off, and I've done that before, I didn't want to catch off too soon. Okay, no other questions, we'll move on to planning and zoning, Mr. Murphy.
Thanks, Jim. Counsel, there is a board of zoning appeals meeting set up for October 12th at 6:00 PM. That variance hearing is regarding 107 Hanson Drive. The owner would like to construct an addition onto an existing accessory garage, and variances are needed regarding the setback and the overall size of that structure. So all are welcome to attend. If you do have questions prior to that, feel free to contact me. I think there's a new bakery that will be opening in town. I think a lot of people have been talking about that. It's at 110, it will be at 110 West Main Street. That's the former location of the Pierogi shop. Julie Wyden is the owner, and it will be called Mary Jane's Bakery. And I think it's sometime in early October that she is hoping to open. And then plans are still being, slowly being submitted regarding Trinity's Neighborhood Hospital. I was talking to the engineer regarding the proposal today, and plans are still being revised and changed, so they're slowly submitting things here and there and I'm taking a look. Anybody, if you have questions, you're always welcome to ask. Tom?
The planning commission meeting, that was October 12th?
It's the board of zoning appeals, and they will be meeting October 12th at 6:00 PM.
Oh, 6:00 PM?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mike?
I know you told us before, but what's the estimated date that they're gonna break ground out there?
They really don't know. I'm kinda curious of that myself, but the fact that they're still kind of modifying and adjusting their plans shows me that it, I guess, will be in reality breaking ground hold until next year.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Tom.
Thanks.
Okay, we'll move on to the council committees. Finance, Mr. Smith.
Yeah, the finance committee met tonight before this meeting to go over a couple of things. We did receive some opioid money, and that's going to check on if we're gonna get any more in. Jeremy already mentioned the $5,200 grant that the police received and a $1,000 grant that Eric had gotten. Congratulations on that. And good job, by the way, for the concert.
Thank you.
Really. The audit, I think, I think all councilmen got the audit report emailed to them. I don't know if you got it, Kristi, but I'll get it to you. It's just a draft, so I think everybody should go over it and if they have any questions, it's 100 pages long. So if there's any questions, contact, and that, you can call me. I pretty much understand the whole thing, so I can answer your questions.
Is there anything we should pay attention to?
It's still in the draft phase, so nothing's public.
Nothing's public, correct?
Not yet.
I wonder about 10 pages of it so far, so. So anyway, we'll, we'll look at that down the road. We may have a conference call with the author if anybody has any questions. Moving on to the reports, the revenue status report. We're at 65% for the year, which is, which is pretty much on target. As far as the expenses go, we, year-to-date, are at 46%, which, which is low, but that's because we're, you know, we're holding off on some projects. I don't think we can move forward with, with any of them, or some of them anyway, at this point, so we do have that money set aside. So we're about two-thirds of the way through, or we only spent 46%. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Butler isn't here this evening. Utility, do you have anything you need to?
Not really. The next meeting will be October 6th.
Right, and that's 15 here in the council chamber. Okay, we'll move on to police committee.
We don't, we have no, no, no report in the committee meeting tonight.
Okay, Streets, I think, Streets North Side, Mr. Vincentza.
Yeah, just kind of getting ready for winter, I guess. How would the salt and what kind of budget is that gonna, how's that gonna hit us this year? Costs are way up?
Salt, we get through an ODOT grant or ODOT program, we order that in what?
$600.
March?
Yeah.
It's, so we order it the year before, so we haven't been hit with any major cost increase yet.
Butter bins are in good shape, right?
Yep.
Okay. When will we start getting M supplies?
Well, once the bins start to blend a little bit, right now they're full.
They're full, okay.
Yes.
How many do we have, bins?
Two.
Two, okay.
Each one will hold around $300.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Oh, and I'll go to Streets South Side, Mr. Thrash. Anything on safety?
No.
Building and grounds, Jordan, do you have any?
I have no report.
Planning Commission is actually in our new councilman's, I don't know if she's had a chance to get with Tom yet, or if she, anything she'd like to say?
Tom did, we did touch base today, and we're gonna set up a time to sit down and have a crash course in that, I think.
I'm sure he'll be able to give you a lot of good information.
Yes, I'm sure.
Okay, we'll move on to Fire District. Linda?
I think everyone received a copy of conceptual design. So if you have any doubts, like I said before, please go up there and get a tour, and you'll see why that is necessary. Next meeting is Wednesday, this coming Wednesday, 9 o'clock at the firehouse.
Does anybody have any questions?
Linda, I just wanted to underscore what?
Linda, I just wanted to underscore what Councilman Vincentza had said too, about the 911 celebration, you know, the dedication and just, I think it was the history lesson, just, it was, and I would be remiss to not, or not to also lift up your voice there, which was a very nice job too.
Thank you, thank you. Also, the board and the department would like to thank everybody for coming out.
Okay, we'll move on to Recreation. Christie, I think you attended the meeting. Do you have anything that you wanted to...
I attended the meeting, part of the meeting, because I didn't know about it when I had made another appointment, so I did have to leave. I did make some notes. Seems like they're really doing a good job down there. I wrote down some figures, but they were rattled off so fast, but the projected money that you think you're going to be taking in by the end of the year is around 100,000. Did I understand that correctly?
Yeah, I hope so.
Yeah, and two years ago, it was just like a sliver of that. So, the hard work down there is really, I mean, you can't deny it, the numbers don't lie, so what a great job. They did talk about getting liquor licenses for future events, possibly getting something on the ballot so that that fixed address could be, so that we could have a liquor license that belonged to the city, to the rec department, to use for those public events, which would probably be cheaper in the long run. They did make a good deal of money that the night of that concert on beer sales. So, I didn't get those exact numbers, but it was, it was a pretty big difference between the cost and what we made.
Yeah.
Is that, maybe afraid of me, was that a decision for the rec board, or does that need to come before council, if it's on the ballot for...
I don't know that.
It'll, it'll probably go to rec and then be brought to council.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you're not thinking this number?
Oh, no, it's way too late. Way too late.
I did ask someone, because I know that they talked about, they were hoping to possibly get it on the ballot in the primary in the spring, but it would be cheaper if it waited until general election, because then the cost is shared. There's not a lot of stuff on the ballot for this upcoming primary next year, so it would cost more to do that. I don't know how much more. It would depend on how many things were on that ballot, was my understanding.
So it eventually would have to come before council?
I would imagine it would have to, yeah.
Has the rec board addressed the bathroom issues there?
Same thing, it's waiting on cost.
Okay. I mean, would it be possible, maybe it's not, that we could just fix it? I mean, just put like doors that open, you know, plywood, it doesn't have to be like a coat of paint, I would think, something like that. But, I mean, we have so many people come in, and, and, and I could appreciate like, if we did a bunch of stuff, but is there a way that we could just do that?
It depends on what you end up doing. What we really need to do is, I mean, we've got major plumbing problems underneath the slab. I mean, when you turn on showers and flush toilets and water comes up in other rooms, major problem. So, that's talking, you know, a major renovation of taking up the slab and doing other things. I've talked to J.C. about this a couple of times, and, I mean, we could put new fixtures in there, but we're not fixing the problem. We're putting lipstick on the pig. I mean, it just doesn't, doesn't function.
Is that hitting the budget this year?
Yes, but it's also with the cost of everything escalating, that's why we're kind of sitting on it.
Yeah, I just, I mean, and I could appreciate that, and like, I mean, this is like to be resonates of the, of the paving, right? We certainly did not want to pave something that we were going to rip up in six months to put new pipes in. But this has been like a long time, we've got people coming, I mean, I guess all I'm, I'm advocating for this being like a priority of, you know, I mean, I can appreciate that, you know, we're 66% done with the year, and we've only set, spent 46%, but we got to save money because we, you know, I can appreciate that, nobody wants to go over. But I'm just, I'm advocating for when it is time to do something like, you know, those bathrooms.
I mean, there's definitely, there's several projects that need to be addressed.
I appreciate that, and I think maybe even having a list of what the projects are to prioritize. I know South Park is talked about, you know, and I'm, I'm not sure what they should be, I'm just, I guess at this point, I'm just advocating those restrooms. You know, we spent all that money as we should have, not complaining all about the floor. Beautiful, you know? We're gonna, you know, have people, a bunch of people coming in, and I just, so.
At least the doors. The doors.
This is new to me.
I know.
Have you gone to the restroom? I did not go to the restroom. Go to the restroom. Just walk in the restroom, you'll see exactly what...
There's no doors on this side?
No, it's there. And we, they're just, it's, yeah, just go see Eric and say, "Get in his restroom," and then just pretend they don't want to go. So, and I know, I'm not trying to like, you know, I'm just, I'm just advocating that, you know, if nothing else, I mean, he's, he, he was sitting right there, who was it? Eric, right? That's him. A fantastic job. We all say that. I mean, it's Eric, Eric, Eric. Beautiful, Marshall, 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 pretty bunch. And you, and I appreciate that. But I feel like we should adore, I'm not, get him adorned.
Election Day, you've got people there, and we're all working the polls, and then people have to go to the restroom, and it's like, you've got this gorgeous, gorgeous floor, it's so pretty, and then go into that restroom, and you can't even shut them.
And that is a little bit of lipstick on the pig, but it's only done a little bit. And it really wouldn't make that cosmetic difference, you know what I mean?
Yes, but you're literally putting lipstick on a pig. It needs major renovations.
Okay, it might need major renovations, but like, and hardwood is a little bit expensive, but I kind of agree with that.
The budget for the renovations, three years ago, was 200,000.
Two, I'm not talking about the whole rec center, because we could talk about a whole...
No, no, the restrooms.
The bathroom.
The restrooms.
The bathroom.
200,000. That was the architect's estimate three years ago.
And I don't want to belabor the point, so, and we can have this, because you're always very receptive to having these conversations. I'm just saying like, to get doors, just the doors, just saying, right? Could we not, for a couple of thousand bucks, put doors in there?
Doubt it. It would be something we could probably rig up and put in, yes. But, to actually do nice partitions, you're not even close with that amount of money.
Okay.
You're talking probably 10 to 12,000 dollars for partitions. And those are the cheapy ones, so those aren't, aren't good ones.
So the, the doors that are on there cannot be, are you saying that they cannot be just replaced? What's there right now? Like, I'm only speaking for the ladies room, I don't...
Yeah, we don't care about the bins. Care less about that. Can they be fixed? I mean, I don't, like with wood, I mean, the school used to do that.
And we could look at it and see, but...
Like, no, we know it's not a permanent fix, but...
I know the original plan was something, I don't know, Chief, if you remember or not, you may not have been here. The original plan was for somebody and, and the police to go down there and fix it. Do you remember that?
Yeah, we had volunteered to go help get the rec center, even helping hand through those money, and if we were able to do that, you know, the guys all volunteered to go do it, to help them pitch in.
J.C.?
What'd that 200,000 dollars get back then?
That was basically renovation of that whole area, taking out the showers, redoing all the plumbing, the sanitary lines, new ceilings, reworking the walls in that area.
Does the health department say anything about this?
Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to Park District. Linda, you have a report?
No report.
Okay. I know the pool is closed, is the, is the park itself still open?
Yes.
People wouldn't use, just the pool itself?
Yes, it is.
If somebody asked me that, my son had thought so, but I wasn't sure. Anybody have any questions for Linda on the park? Okay, hearing then, we'll move on to ordinances and resolutions. Our law director, Elizabeth Blake.
Okay, we have four pieces of legislation before us tonight. Up for first reading is Resolution Number 2022-40. That's the ODOT project title, municipal bridge inspection program. This is an emergency piece of legislation. I apologize for the formatting, but it comes straight from ODOT and basically use their form and fill in your information. Emergency language, we're looking for it, is on the bottom of page two.
Will it be changed, our format, or are we okay with this?
No, this is, this is what they want sent back into them, so all their legislation is standardized, so.
Okay, just remind me, oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay. I just, okay, 37, 38, 40, 40 what? What was 39?
39 was the financial last time.
That we did last one?
Right, yeah.
Great, thank you.
So, and then up for, also up for first reading is Resolution Number 2022-41. That's the resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor and declaring an emergency. This is the format used by the county auditor, and trust me, it drove my secretary up and down trying to get it from PDF to Word and then trying to get all the numbers in the right place, so. And so, I think we'll stress those two first and then go to the second reading.
Okay, the first thing we'll do, these will be Resolution 2022-40. Jacob, would you read that for the first time, please?
Resolution Number 2022-40, ODOT project title, municipal bridge inspection.
Wait, can I, or are we doing the second reading? I apologize, on 37, 38?
No, we do that on the second reading. We'll do first readings first.
Oh, gotcha, yeah.
Okay, then we'll move on to...
So this is the first?
Right, this is the first, yes.
This needs to be an emergency?
Correct.
Okay, that's the first reading, this is requested as emergency, so if anyone would like to take any further action?
I move that the rules requiring ordinances and resolutions to be read on three separate readings be suspended and declaring an emergency.
We have a motion and a second. Take a vote on whether or not to consider this emergency legislation.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Oakbridge?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thresh?
Yes.
Vincentza?
Yes.
All members in favor?
Okay, this will be looked at as emergency legislation, so at this time, we'll read it for the final time.
Resolution Number 2022-40, ODOT, ODOT project title, municipal bridge inspection program.
Okay, you need a motion?
Need a motion.
And a second. We have motion, a second to vote on the legislation per passage.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Oakbridge?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thresh?
Yes.
Vincentza?
Yes.
All members in favor?
Okay, 2022-40 is passed as emergency. Now move on to first reading on 2022-41.
Resolution Number 2022-41, resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor and declaring an emergency.
Okay, this again has emergency language in it, and it has to be submitted by no later than October 1st. Does anybody wish to take?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
This is time to ask. So this is no new funding, this is the way it's always been? This is what we generate on these continuous levies?
Tax levies, yes.
Right? Okay. So, I will, any other questions? So, you want a motion?
If somebody wants to consider it further.
Yeah, I do. I move that the rules requiring ordinances and resolutions to be read on three separate readings be suspended, declaring an emergency.
And a second, Mr. Thresh. Will not take a vote to consider this as emergency legislation.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Oakbridge?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thresh?
Yes.
Vincentza?
Yes.
All members in favor?
Yeah, this is to be considered an emergency, so at this time, we'll read it for the final times.
Resolution Number 2022-41, resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor and declaring an emergency.
Some moved. A motion to...
Some moved.
Wait a second, Mr. Thresh will not take a vote on passage of the legislation.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Oakbridge?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thresh?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
All members in favor?
Okay, 2022-31 has been passed as an emergency. Okay, now we'll move on to the second readings, which is 2022, 37 and 38.
Okay, up for second reading tonight is 2022-37. That's the resolution authorizing public service director to submit applications to the Ohio Public Works Commission, Natural Resources Assistance Council's Clean Ohio Conservation Fund for grant funds for the acquisition and preservation of property along the National Road Bike Way and declaring an emergency. This is up for second reading. It does not need to be passed tonight. Emergency language is in here, because application date is what, October 14th?
Yes.
And then also up for a second read tonight is Resolution Number 2022-38, the resolution authorizing the public service director to submit an application to the Ohio Department of Natural Resources for grant funds for the acquisition of native trees for city property and declaring an emergency. This also is just for second read, does not need to be passed emergency tonight.
So, the fact that this is a second reading, our newest councilperson, she, because we had one meeting and she was not official councilperson, so is, like, when we take action next week, if nobody wants to do action, is it okay that she's joining us midstream, or is this something?
Yes, because this is just a second read, so.
Okay, but the fact that it, it doesn't matter?
Right, you had, right, you had a majority last time when you did the first read, so.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
And this is the one that, you will come to us with the matching amount, correct, before anything's done?
Yes.
The bike way one?
As much as we can figure, because we're not going to have the budget done before the end of the year. And this one, I think, has got to be submitted the same day. I think they're both due the same day, October 15th. So we have to make a determination of what we're going to spend based off of what we have, what we're checking to roll over.
If both these are 50/50 match, right? Like, so whatever we put up, they'll...
No, the, the tree one is a 50/50, one-for-one match. The other one is depending upon what the amounts of the property are worth of what we can do. There's usually a 25% match, but a lot of times, what we can do is get the owner to donate that. So if they donate that value, then there's nothing.
Okay. But we need to have, to apply for this grant, we may need a match, we may not, the bike way one?
It's going to depend on negotiation for the two partial numbers. The evaluations, the appraisals came in, and they are well under what I know both of the property owners think that their property is worth.
Okay.
So, that'll be a negotiation argument.
Okay. And then the, the tree one is, we just need to determine amount that we know that we're going to be able to hook toward that to apply for this. Okay. Yeah, I'm good with these, so we'll be the second reading.
Okay, Jacob, would you read 2022-37, second reading, please?
Resolution Number 2022-37, the resolution authorizing... Resolution Number 2022-37, the resolution authorizing the Public Service Director to submit applications to the Ohio Public Works Commission's Natural Resource Assistance Council's Clean Ohio Conservation Fund for grant funds for the acquisition and preservation of property along the National Road Bike Way, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, that is the second reading on 2022-37. Now, we have 2022-38.
Yes, that's read.
Resolution Number 2022-38, the resolution authorizing the Public Service Director to submit an application to the Ohio Department of Natural Resources for grant funds for the acquisition of native trees for city property, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, that is the second reading on 2022-38. That's everything on the agenda. Again, we talked about the group session, and was able to attend part of that last Saturday. And it was, to me, I thought it was a very awesome, awesome program that was put on. The three bands were excellent. Got to hear most of two of them, I didn't get the third one. But it was a good crowd, it was a very orderly crowd, it was everybody having a good time, and weather was perfect. And again, that was a well put on, well put on program, and good job there.
Thank you.
Okay, nothing else on there. The next council meeting will be Monday, October 3rd, at 7:00 P.M. here in the council chambers. At this time, I will accept a motion to adjourn. Mr. Thrash, second. Opbridge?
Yes.